Good evening. It is Monday, September ninth, two thousand and nineteen, and I would like to call the City of Burnsville Planning Commission to order. Uh, we have a lengthy agenda tonight. Uh, it's six thirty, by the way. We're starting right in time. And, uh, to start with, I'd like to, uh, have a motion to adopt the agenda, but first, let's go to staff. Do you have any changes to the agenda?
No changes from staff.
Commissioners, any changes? Okay. Do I have a motion?
Uh, I move to adopt.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. The next item is the approval of the minutes from the last meeting, the August twenty-six, twenty nineteen meeting. Staff, do you have any changes?
No changes from staff.
None, any from the commission?
No.
I move to approve.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Okay. So that brings us to, um, our first item of action, and that is a public hearing for IREIT properties for conditional use permit for multiple buildings on one lot and landscaping design and a variance to the building and parking setback and exterior lighting standards for construction of a new clubhouse located at two zero zero one, one hundred and twenty-first Street East. And Ms. Arnold?
Thank you. Uh, good evening, planning commissioners. Uh, so this application before you is for multiple requests to accommodate the construction of this new clubhouse for the Colonial Villas Apartments, which are near the intersection of County Road eleven and one hundred and twenty-second. Uh, so the subject site is zoned R three B, high-density residential, and it's guided high-density residential in the comprehensive plan. It is adjacent to some single-family homes to the east and, uh, from, from other multifamily developments and some business developments to the north, south, and west. Uh, the development is made up of six separate apartment buildings, each on their own parcel. So shown here, very busy, but is the Alta survey of the properties. So there are six residential lots, which, um, were in the subdivision as it was originally platted in nineteen sixty-eight. Uh, the site was designed to be served and accessed by one hundred and twenty-first Street, uh, which is, was vacated later in the eighties. Um, the buildings were approved as building permits by the city council, um, in nineteen sixty-eight and nineteen seventy-one, and then the vacated one hundred and twenty-first Street still does hold the utilities which serve the area. Uh, so there was a sixty-foot wide, uh, utility easement, uh, in formally one hundred and twenty-first. So the requests as part of this application, uh, CUP request for multiple buildings on one lot as the proposed clubhouse will be a second built structure on Lot Two, of Block Two of Connolly Estates. Um, the CUP request for landscaping design, variance request for a thirty-two-foot primary structure front yard setback, and variance request for a zero-foot parking setback, and the variance request for exterior lighting standards for foot candles at the property line. Um, so this proposal, it's a four thousand sixty square foot clubhouse, um, to hold their leasing office as well. Uh, this space will hold some social space, office areas, uh, fitness room, um, package pickup area, as well as some outdoor patio for some recreational space for residents. So there are seventeen existing parking spaces on site, and the proposal will rework the parking area. Um, since there's no structure here now, um, some of this is parking on the vacated street, um, and it runs parallel through this, uh, circle area. So it will be reoriented over in this direction where the pool for the apartment complex is. So a zero-foot setback is requested at the property line, which runs directly through the vacated street. Um, this is an existing condition, as it's a vacated street, it's, uh, that's already used for some parallel parking, and that they will also be reorienting the parking area, as I said. Um, so the parking lot design is an upgrade to the aesthetics of this inner courtyard area. Um, after the street was vacated, it, um, has been used as access to the site. Across-access and cross-parking agreement was never provided, uh, for the development after the vacation of the street, even though the utility easement was. Uh, so there is a condition that, uh, one of these agreements be filed with the county, showing that the properties and the development have shared access um, on this vacated street, which is, uh, is now a drive aisle. Um, so on your screen are the building elevations for the proposal. Uh, building materials proposed meet architectural material standards of the ordinance and exceed them in some cases. Materials are also, um, on a sample board, which I did not bring with me. I apologize. Uh-huh. But the, the colors shown in the PowerPoint are very similar to, uh, the material board. Um, the roof is illustrated as metal flashing with an angled roofline. At the top of the roofline, it will be twenty-two feet, and at the bottom, it will be about thirteen feet. Uh, the clubhouse is proposed and some natural wood colors. Um, materials proposed, proposal be an upgrade to the aesthetics on the site, and the applicant has indicated that in the future, um, the existing apartment buildings will be, um, upgraded on their facades as well to be more compatible with the proposed materials for this new clubhouse. The proposed landscaping plan, uh, indicates that six trees will be removed. Um, these are here to incorporate some of this, uh, drive aisle expansion and where the building will be located. About eleven existing trees will remain, um, mostly in the southern and northern portion of these large parcels that the apartment buildings are on. Um, the landscape plan does not meet the number of trees per open area square footage on either of the two lots when they're calculated per lot. Uh, the request for the conditional use permit for landscaping design, the applicant is indicating that when calculated per the square foot of the improved and impacted area of the development, that the application does meet landscaping requirements. Um, landscaping within the parking area exceeds ordinance requirements at about nine percent compared to three percent. Uh, within the improvement area, the plan meets the twenty-five percent diversity requirement and exceeds, uh, the building perimeter landscaping requirement. Um, overall landscaping requirements in R three B are fifty percent, uh, for the whole landscaped or open area. Uh, in this case, it is calculated at close to forty-seven percent for the development as a whole. The vacated street, um, from the, uh, one hundred and twenty-first, as well as some of this, like, recreational area, that's not calculated as part of a landscaped or, um, open area, but it can affect that calculation. The intent of the ordinance is for newly developed areas to be landscaped and maintained. The existing landscaping on the lots is an existing condition of the originally approved building permits from the sixties and seventies. The updated area does meet city landscaping requirements, so staff is supportive of the CUP for landscaping design. The exterior lighting standards, uh, variance request is related to the requirement that the foot candle, uh, output at the property line of residentially zoned lots not exceed, uh, point five foot candles. Um, so the property line goes through the center of the vacated street, and this may be, uh, challenging to see, but the photometric plans do show a range between about two and three-point-seven foot candles. Um, however, this related, lighting is related to parking lot lighting within the expanded parking area for the proposed clubhouse. Uh, the lots between the apartment buildings do share a common owner, um, and no new lighting is proposed near shared property lines, uh, with outside, uh, neighboring property owners. Um, exterior lighting will still need to be downcast and shielded on faces, all faces, that's an ordinance requirement, and, um, so as mentioned earlier, the parking lot setback request reflects the existing maintained zero-foot parking setback for the drive aisle and new parking spaces. Uh, the, for the other variance requests, the building setback, yeah, request is to the front property line. Um, so these lots were plotted as a double frontage lot, um, with a vacated street, um, there are still plotted property lines at front on either side. So, um, the forty-foot required setback, they're requesting thirty-two feet of a setback length. Uh, this, um, so that would be a eight-foot request. So this slide shows the grading drainage and erosion control plan. Uh, the applicant will be providing a new stormwater pond here north of the new parking area. Uh, we can answer questions about that, uh, later if necessary. Um, on the utility plan here, you can see some of the utility lines that do run underneath the vacated street, uh, within that sixty-foot easement that was maintained over the vacated street. So they serve the site and the neighborhood to the east. Uh, the parking and geometric plan shows the new surface parking area and some of the existing parking and drive aisle, which will be resurfaced and updated after the construction of the proposed clubhouse. Come back to civil plans, um, if necessary. Uh, so as you've heard this evening, the CUP request is for two items, for multiple buildings on one lot and for landscaping design. Uh, the apartment development was originally proved as one building per lot at the time of permit. So the inclusion of a clubhouse on a lot with an apartment building already located on it, uh, does require the CUP request for multiple buildings. The landscaping ordinance does allow for alternative landscape plans to be considered by CUP to evaluate compatibility with the intent of the ordinance. Uh, the existing landscaping on site is, as approved many decades ago, uh, the impacted area by the construction of the clubhouse does show a landscaping design that meets the ordinance and in some areas exceeds ordinance standards, while the two parcels affected by the construction and the development as a whole, uh, do not meet current ordinance standards. The intent of the landscaping ordinance can be met by improving the design of the redeveloped portion of the site and the lots. The variance requests are for three provisions, so the building setback, the parking setback, and exterior lighting standards. Uh, the variance request is caused by the factor that each building in the apartment development is on its own lot, rather than one large lot with multiple buildings on it. Uh, the existing property lines from the six subdivision plan do affect setbacks and exterior lighting standards. Um, but they are, all these lots are owned in common by the same property owner, and, um, historically, how that has been the case, when they're all sold, they are all sold together. Uh, when evaluated with the variance guideline policy, there are eleven positives and four negatives, as included in your background packet, and the proposal is reasonable. Um, some engineering-related improvements to the site are the additional by-two-minute parking areas, some storm sewer and utility improvements. Uh, the stormwater management accommodated on site by that, uh, stormwater pond. A general, uh, NPDES construction permit would be required, and the engineering department has indicated that these, uh, two conditions uh, be added, that the outstanding engineering memo comments be addressed adequately, and that a low-impact development, uh, management practice, management practices agreement executed, uh, for the, uh, property and development. Uh, police, fire, and building have reviewed the application. There's no outstanding comments. The CUP and the variance request do reflect a unique situation of the, each building being on its own lot, rather than one, uh, large parcel for development. The proposed improvements are consistent with the R three B high-density residential district. Uh, so staff is recommending approval subject to the following conditions. Um, and there is a small mistype in this, which should be reflected here. So, as presented, a properly drawn legal instrument executed by the parties concerned for joint use of, um, or for use of the off-street parking facilities shall be filed as a deed restriction on the properties in the Recorder's Office of Dakota County. Uh, lighting shall be downcast and shielded on all faces, uh, that all outstanding city engineering memo comments be addressed adequately, and the low-impact development, uh, executed and recorded prior to issuance of building permit. So this item will be a public hearing, and then, uh, representative from the applicant team can answer some specific questions about the proposal if necessary. Otherwise, I'm available for comment as well.
Good. Thank you, Ms. Arnold. Um, do we have some comments? Commissioner John?
Yeah, uh, so there's a forty-foot variance, uh, per code. What's the reason behind the forty-foot variance? Or f- the forty-foot, that they're going to thirty-two or the eight-foot?
Okay, so the forty-foot setback would be required, um, on, is required in that zoning district from the front or the rear lot line, and in this case, uh, it was plotted as the front here to front one hundred and twenty-first Street. Um, so that's just an ordinance requirement of forty feet, and they're requesting the thirty-two feet so that they could, uh, fit the building in, uh, in this proposed location.
What's the reason for the setback? Why is there a setback in the code? Do you know, or is it?
Um, so setbacks are created, um, as, as often it's aesthetics or safety, that it's for further back from a road.
Okay. So this being a private road, really, it really doesn't matter, correct?
Um, well, in this case, it's from the property line, because this is still considered the front property line after being vacated.
Right.
Um, so it's from lines and not necessarily where a road is, from lot lines. I don't know if that helps.
Yeah.
Well, I can understand a little confusion on this. This is, we're kind of trying to fit something into an odd property, and I'm curious, um, if replating is possible here to kind of do away with some of the creativity that's needed, or if that's something that was considered or maybe down the road.
Um, so, um, it would be possible for the applicant to do that, and they've indicated it's not something they're interested in doing with the lots that they own.
Are there any other questions or comments? Any questions or comments for the applicant? Would the applicant, is the applicant here? Yes?
Yes, yes.
Would you like to make any comments? Yeah, if you'd come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please. Uh, good evening. My name is Jeff Gears, and I'm with BDH Young. I'm the project architect on the project. So I think the, uh, uh, and Peter is, uh, here tonight. He's the, uh, he's the, uh, client. Um, I think the biggest challenge was, we were just trying to find the, um, best way to fit this amenity onto the site, and, a- as, as mentioned, you know, the, the building owner, or the property owner didn't have the interest of combining these lots, and so that's part of the reason that we're asking for the variance in the, in the, uh, CUP. So if this were to be sold to another, uh, owner down the road, the clubhouse would go with the south property, correct? Correct. Okay. Commissioner Roberts?
Um, I would think the, um, people living in the buildings are pretty excited about this.
I would speculate, yes.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I, I looked at it as being a very big plus, and you guys are dealing with quite the unique property to try to fit something like that in, so. Actually, I thought the way it was managed out, I thought was pretty good. If we're only looking at an eight-foot variance, that isn't that bad for what you had to work with.
Correct.
For that way.
Commissioner Wadd.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo. It's a, it's a pretty nice solution, so.
Thank you.
I think it, it'll be a hu- huge improvement, especially for a property of that age, you know, this is, uh, it'd be nice to see this go up.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, Commissioner John?
Oh, I was gonna say, I was really excited about seeing the property get this amendment, so I, I agree. It sounds like a great deal.
Great. Thank you so much. Hold on, one more.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You may or may not know this, but, um, is there a timeline of when the other buildings are gonna be upgraded? Cause this building is gonna make everything else look so different.
You know, um, I would say, yes, um, my understanding is that the, um, property owners would like to make improvements. I can't speak on the specific timeline on that, but.
Yeah, it's not a prerequisite or anything. I'm just curious, yeah, cause it looks like the whole complex then is just gonna upgrade.
That's the intent, correct?
Good, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so this is a public hearing, and I would like to open the public hearing at six forty-seven. Is there anybody that would like to speak to this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing at six forty-eight. And commissioners, we have a decision to make. We have some discussion. Do you have any comments, concerns? Would anybody like to make a motion? Commissioner John?
I will make a motion that, uh, we recommend to city council approval of the conditional use permit for multiple buildings on one lot in landscape and design and variance to the building and parking setback, exterior lighting standards for construction of the new clubhouse located at two thousand and one, one hundred and twenty-first Street East, subject to the following conditions, uh, four conditions that were previously listed on this slide.
I second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? The motion carries. Uh, I agree with some of the comments that were made, so, um, thank you for bringing this to us. I, I hope that the, uh, the other buildings get the same type of facade and, and look in the future. I think that would be great for the, the complex there.
Yes, that is the intent.
Thank you. All right, so that will bring us to our next item, which is a public hearing, uh, for the application of Cooper Johnson for planned unit development amendment for a tavern microbrewery to be located at one two two five seven Nicolet Avenue South. And I believe.
Still me?
Still, you, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, so this item is related to an office warehouse building and existing planned unit development, uh, north of heart of the city and Highway thirteen, and, um, adjacent to the Burnsville Transit Station, uh, which is here, and the parking ramp, um, and south of Nicolet Avenue. So the proposal is for a microbrewery or a brew pub, which is encompassed within the tavern definition within our zoning ordinance. Uh, so the subject site is zoned B three, general business, with a planned unit development for office and office warehouse. The site is guided business retail office in the twenty forty comprehensive plan. The existing planned unit development was a staged development of multiple office and warehouse buildings, uh, this particular stage in the Nicolet Business Center. Um, so a tavern, uh, as defined in the zoning ordinance, is a conditional use in the B three zoning district, um, as the property is an existing planned unit development for a combination district of, uh, conditional uses in B three and, and, uh, permitted uses in I one to create that office warehouse, uh, feel. Um, the applicant is also requesting some deviations to the city code. This PUD amendment would be necessary for that request, as well as, um, that, that the microbrewery and the restaurant portion doesn't quite fit into office and warehouse. Um, so the floor plan shown on your screen shows the breakout of some of the uses and space within the microbrewery. Um, so the proposed, um, brew pub at this location will produce craft beer, uh, in-house and sell the product, uh, growlers, crowlers, uh, for takeaway. Uh, they'll be providing pizza in the dining area. Um, the product will be served on site with other products not created by the microbrewery. Um, the intent is also to provide, um, a coffee and donut service in the mornings, and kind of creating a morning and night, uh, community space, uh, friendly, friendly space. So the use at the microbrewery will contain the brewing area, um, the taproom area, um, there's going to be some room for event space, and there will be, um, uh, some restaurant service, uh, with pizza service. Um, so land use benefits, uh, to the planned unit development. Um, the proposed microbrewery will add a new business attraction to Burnsville that we don't have very many of. Um, uh, there will be a bike rack provided on site, uh, for the use, and ride-share drop-off locations will be utilized as part of their operations. Uh, deviations requested with the planned unit development amendment, uh, to allow painted wall signage, uh, staff does not support, uh, to the trash enclosure roof requirement, uh, which staff does support, and a parking reduction, uh, which staff supports, and pa- as part of it is an existing condition, um, of the planned unit development. So the proposal for the microbrewery with the restaurant and the taproom and the event space will be occupying the corner space here, um, in an office warehouse building. Uh, the zoning ordinance requires that restaurants located within a thousand feet of a residentially developed property include some odor-reducing equipment. Uh, so staff has communicated with the applicant about this ordinance requirement, and the applicant did provide some supplemental information, which was included uh, in your packet, an additional narrative, and the restaurant use within the microbrewery will be using, uh, pizza ovens, and the applicant has indicated that the ventilation requirements for their equipment will be satisfactory and alleviating odor uh, between any venting in the residential structure. Um, a condition has been included that odor control be addressed, uh, should it become a nuisance, um, which is something that was discussed, discussed with the applicant. Uh, the applicant has indicated that they are confident that the equipment that they intend to provide, uh, will alleviate these concerns. Um, existing, an existing parking and access agreement is recorded for the properties, uh, within this planned unit development, and showing a shared parking arrangement and access. Um, so the property line actually does split, uh, right here, similar to where this, uh, input onto Nicolet Avenue is. Um, so the deviation for reduced parking is related to the, uh, seventy-seven additional spaces that the ordinance would require, uh, for all of the uses within the buildings. Um, the proposed use, though, will have differing peak hours from existing office warehouse, uh, businesses within the, uh, development, and by providing some bike part, parking and ride-share drop-off locations, um, the seventy-seven spaces would lead to an access and parking for the site. Uh, this site is also adjacent to the Burnsville Transit Station and north of heart of the city where the future Orange Line Station is set to be located. Uh, the, uh, original PUD, uh, did also include, uh, parking reduction, uh, for office warehouse uses as well, with the assumption that the warehouse uses would not require as much parking. So that's supportive of that, uh, deviation. Uh, there is a trash enclosure that's new, proposed in the rear of the building, uh, circled here. So the ordinance does require a roof for trash enclosures within business districts. However, the city council has directed staff to amend the ordinance related to screening standards, which will remove the roof requirement, so staff is supportive of the deviation. Is this, uh, very soon, is, is no longer to be based on some city council direction for the ordinance? Um, enclosure otherwise meets screening standards and materials used and location, uh, which, uh, all will be finalized at the building permit stage as well. Um, so there will be a rooftop chiller unit located on the building. Uh, the mechanical, mechanical equipment will be screened by the existing building design and distance from the roofline, about, uh, fifty-five to sixty feet in each direction, uh, from the edge of the roofline. Uh, so based on current design, it will not be visible from the public right-of-way and parking areas. Um, so the applicant did come in with plans requesting a painted sign on the exterior of the building in two locations, uh, one of which was brick and one of which was a composite panel material. The city's ordinances, uh, would not allow a painted sign. That's not permitted. Um, additionally, the existing planned unit development permits panel signage as wall signs. Um, so staff discussed the option of utilizing this panel signage to create the same look for the building, and they, uh, the applicant's e- eminable to that option. Um, a new comprehensive sign plan and criteria will need to be submitted at the time of sign permit to indicate, uh, which tenant spaces can be allowed, how much square footage, um, within the development, uh, and to show that, uh, this location may, um, so the square here shows the existing space for panel signage, um, but that is a requirement of the, uh, app, or of the property owner and not of the city's zoning ordinance. We would allow more space per the city's base ordinances, and, uh, by updating their sign criteria plan, they can, uh, more align with the city's, uh, sign ordinance. And showing a shared parking arrangement and access, um, so the property line actually does split uh, right here, similar to where this uh, input onto Nicolet Avenue is. Um, so the deviation for reduced parking is related to the uh, seventy-seven additional spaces that the ordinance would require. Uh, for all of the uses within the buildings. Um, the proposed use though will have differing peak hours from existing office warehouse uh, businesses within the uh, development. And by providing some bike part, parking and a ride share drop-off locations, um, the seventy-seven spaces would lead to an access and parking for the site. Uh, this site is also adjacent to the Burnsville Transit Station and north of heart of the city where the future Orange Line Station is set to be located. Uh, the uh, original P U D uh, did also include a parking reduction uh, for office warehouse uses as well. With the assumption that the warehouse uses would not require as much parking. So supportive of that uh, deviation. Uh, there is a trash enclosure that's new proposed in the rear of the building, uh, circled here. So the ordinance does require a roof for trash enclosures within business districts. However, the city council has directed staff to amend the ordinance related to screening standards, which will remove the roof requirement. So staff is supportive of the deviation, is this uh, very soon, is, is no longer to be based on some city council direction for the ordinance. Enclosure otherwise meets screening standards and materials used and location, uh, which uh, all will be finalized at the building permit stage as well. Um, so there will be a rooftop chiller unit located on the building, uh, the mechanical, mechanical equipment will be screened by the existing building design. And distance from the roof line, about fifty-five to sixty feet in each direction, uh, from the edge of the roof line. Uh, so based on current design, it will not be visible from the public right-of-way and parking areas. Um, so the applicant did come in with plans requesting a painted sign on the exterior of the building in two locations. Uh, one of which was brick and one of which was a composite panel material. The city's ordinances uh, would not allow a painted sign, that's not permitted. Additionally, the existing planned unit development permits panel signage as wall signs. Um, so staff discussed the option of utilizing this panel signage to create the same look for the building and they, uh, the applicant's e- eminable to that option. Um, a new comprehensive sign plan and criteria will need to be submitted at the time of sign permit to indicate uh, which tenant spaces can be allowed. How much square footage um, within the development, uh, and to show that uh, this location may, um. So the square here shows the existing space for panel signage, um, but that is a requirement of the uh, app. Or of the property owner and not of the city's zoning ordinance, we would allow more space per the city's base ordinances. And uh, by updating their sign criteria plan, they can uh, more align with the city's uh, sign ordinance. Uh, this condition has been added that the plans be revised within the sign permit application to show a panel sign and not a painted sign on the exterior of the building. Uh, there's also a proposed monument sign, which does meet height and size requirements for the zoning district. And the applicant is aware of the five-foot setback for the proposed signage, so that sign will be finalized at the time of cer- sign permit application as well. Um, for some staff considerations, uh, engineering, building and fire departments reviewed the application and have no outstanding comments. Um, the applicant will need to work through the liquor licensing process with the city prior to occupancy. And the water department has discussed some operations with the applicant as well. So planning staff did receive public comments related to the application after the agenda background report was published. And these comments were provided in your seat prior to the start of the meeting, uh, for additional review. Uh, this will also be a public hearing, uh, for public statements for the record, uh, the proposed use itself of the microbrewery. Staff is supportive of the application, that it will be a unique draw to the area and complement the area north of heart of the city and near the Burnsville Transit Station. And future Orange Line Transit Station. So staff is recommending approval of the application, uh, subject to these conditions. That the conditions of previously approved planned unit developments remain in full force and effect, uh, that odor control be addressed should odor create a nuisance. That the plans be revised at the time of sign permit application to show a panel sign and not a painted sign on the exterior. And that an updated comprehensive sign plan for the building criteria be submitted at the time of sign permit application. Um, applicant team is present this evening to respond to commission questions and I'm open for any clarifications, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Arnold. Are there any questions for Ms. Arnold? Commissioner Anderson.
Uh, yeah, I was wondering, um, who determines if it is a nuisance for the odor? Is it the people that work in that area or the residential area that's within a thousand feet?
So, um, we would, it would be from uh, within the ordinance requirements for um, complaints. That get taken in by the code enforcement department. Um, the applicant indicated in some of their additional narratives that they provided, that they were willing to work with it if it became an issue and they received complaints. Um, to uh, further add in additional odor equipment if necessary beyond what they were already planning to use.
Alright, if the applicant's here, would you like to address the commission? State your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Cooper Johnson, twelve sixty Minnehaha Avenue West, St. Paul. Sorry, I'm not sure what people usually say, uh, we think this is gonna be a force for good. Uh, my family and I opened a brewery in St. Paul, uh, almost three years ago. And it, the mission being to serve the community, to be a hub, uh, to support local nonprofits and cultural institutions. Museums, things like that, um, and it's been just awesome. So I'm doing this sort of on my own with their full support and help. Uh, and I hope it can kind of be the same type of thing here. I have family who lives really close to the site, on both sides of my family, who are gonna help out and so.
So, I guess I would like to know a little bit about your experience in St. Paul. And have there been any issues with odor or any complaints from neighbors? And then if you would, just further expand on what you think your hours of operation might be.
Yeah.
Um, any, any issues that you've seen in your location in St. Paul that might translate to your location in Burnsville?
Odor, um, is a non-issue, it's, it's not even uh, an area. As far as brewing and gas-fired oven, gas-powered ovens, uh, they aren't even on the list. For engineering firms to address as far as odor abatement, it's for brewing, it's steam. Um, and for the pizza ovens, it's largely hot air. So we haven't had any issues with that, there's a coffee roaster down the street that just smells like toast. Just in the parking lot, but it doesn't, you know, you have to be ten feet from their exhaust to smell it. Um, we haven't had any issues with the community. We're, it's, you know, far and away, the community seems to love us, we've never had any complaints about parking or traffic. Or odor or anything like that, it's just a gathering place, sorry if I didn't address your whole question.
Uh, what do you anticipate?
Oh, sorry, yeah, so we're planning, we're actually planning to open at ten thirty or eleven to do like a light lunch service. That's happening as prep is happening for the evening, work is happening in the brew house. We, at our current place, we open at eight AM during the weeks to serve coffee, during the weekdays to serve coffee and nine AM on the weekends. And it, it works really well, we don't uh, wanna open that early at least to start. Cause we wanna work our way into it, but it's mainly just to have a place for the people who work in the area to come grab a bite to eat. Or, you know, there's so many people who, for whatever reason, can have a beer at noon or whatever. They may not be working that day and people who work non-traditional schedules and things like that, so.
And then what time do you plan on closing?
Oh, we plan on closing at eleven on weekdays and midnight on weekends.
Okay, is that about what you do?
Yeah, that's exactly, yeah, and, and earlier on Sundays, so maybe nine or ten on Sundays.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner John.
Is there any particular reason why you selected this particular location?
We wanted to be near the heart of the city. We like Burnsville a lot, I did an assessment of fourteen municipalities and it felt like Burnsville was the best fit. And in the most need, we actually, Burnsville is uh, one of our primary. Uh, one of the places that most of our customers live, who travel to our brewery in St. Paul, so.
So if not this particular location, because it is a, a different district, would there be another location in Burnsville that you'd be considering?
Uh, we looked, we looked pretty extensively and it's just so hard to find space. That would work, that has enough clearance height, first of all, and then having a, a building owner who's willing to work with you. Just cause it's a little more involved of a process, so.
And this building owner has been very open and.
Yeah, oh, they're wonderful and they, they, one of the things we were looking for was a building owner who had another brewery tenant in another building. And understand, understand it actually how it worked and not just grade a brewery, so that was really helpful. And we, we have, a number of municipalities have reached out to us to pitch us, you know, tax abatements and spaces. And things like that, and we liked Burnsville so much that we picked Burnsville instead.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Roberts.
Yeah, we've, um, I don't know if you know, but we received some um, concerns by some of the neighbors. Uh, I mean, this is a business park for business and all of a sudden, there's gonna be a bar there. Um, whether you call it a brew pub or whatever, it's still a bar. And the concerns were that this is now not gonna be the business atmosphere that they signed the lease for, for their business. All of a sudden, you're gonna come in and do this, do you see any confliction with that type with neighbors? And, I mean, I've seen, I went by and I looked at it, you know, I did around it, looking at everything that's going on. It's definitely a business orientated type atmosphere. You're across thirteen from the heart of the city, so getting to the heart of the city is gonna be a chore, anyway. So my big questions were that, location, 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 where do you see this being the big draw? I mean, give me your, you know, your, your aspect on why you want this location, or was it just all that's left?
Oh, they, we, we wanna be located centrally and being just across the street from the heart of the city. And near the uh, transit station, I mean, it seemed perfect. Um, and in the building we're currently in in St. Paul, there's five hundred thousand square feet. And the vast majority of the space is for businesses and offices. And we're a meeting space after work, we're a meeting space during the day. You don't have to buy beer to come and use our facilities as a breakout space from your office. Um, and we don't have tra- we have very little traffic before seven at night. So, we found it works really well and it's kind of a new model that we're almost an amenity. Rather than a distraction or anything like that, and we liked having businesses around us. You can come grab some pizza, have a beer, have a coke before you head home, maybe you wanna wait out traffic. That's a, a huge part of our business in St. Paul is just the people who work in the building.
Okay, um, can I still just, I got just a couple more things. Um, one of the things that you guys listed about was um, selling other products. I mean, are you gonna have a full liquor license?
Uh, that would be the hope.
Okay.
But it, but very, very tertiary to our own beer.
Right.
But just so that if a, if a family comes or a group of people and someone doesn't like beer or drink beer, um, that's actually one of our biggest complaints. So it'd be a very limited selection beyond our own beer, but maybe hams or something like that, just for.
But I mean, a full liquor license as in alcohol.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're gonna have that as well. Um, live music?
It's not core, we probab- we hope, yeah.
Just trying to, you know, put all these points together. Um, coffee and donuts was mentioned, things like that, so you're gonna be having more of a, when you start opening it for earlier hours, obviously?
Yeah, that, that's a little up in the air.
Okay.
We, we're just, we're focusing on pizza and our own beer.
Okay.
Anything else?
Um, not at the second, okay, Commissioner John.
So, you kind of planned off with Commissioner Roberts, so tell us a little bit about your location in St. Paul, what kind of a neighborhood is that in?
It, it's a, we're on the edge of an industrial area.
Okay.
So we're, on one side of our street is industry for about a mile, square mile. And the other side is single-family homes for four or five miles, all the way across St. Paul.
Whereabouts in St. Paul?
On Prior Avenue, uh, just north of the Menards on University.
Okay, okay, uh, do you get a lot of complaints, some of the complaints we were reading about, not complaints, but I would say um, hesitations. Is um, someone working by herself in, in an office, uh, cigarette butts? People being out at late hours, cars being left in parking lots, that type of thing, what is your, your experience? Can you calm some of those fears, are there anything that?
We've never had um, a complaint in that way. Um, it doesn't attract that type of crowd, I would say a very, very small. It's probably less representative of, than the population as a whole, smoke cigarettes, um, they're not drinking to excess. We have, in St. Paul, we have a wet house two blocks away. And I think the number of times we've had to cut somebody off from services too in three years. Um, we have a policy in place to call Ubers for people who are even slightly concerned about. We don't allow cars in the lot overnight. We, we were actually begged by the other tenants in the building to start opening earlier. And they've asked us to be open later, because they do see it as an amenity. We, I mean, we haven't had any issues, especially with the neighbors. We host, we donate to everything, church fundraisers, all that, I mean, we don't say no to anything. And we host community events constantly, so it re- I mean, it really is very different than a traditional bar atmosphere today. Since we've been open at eight, we had a group of probably fifteen parents with their small children. And they're playing board games and drinking coffee and having juice boxes and it's really nice and not what you'd imagine of somewhere that sells liquor.
Now, you said that you wouldn't allow cars to remain parked, but yet people are being Ubered home, what, what happens to their cars?
Yeah, we, we ask that they call somebody to come pick it up, um, but sometimes, you know, it'll just have to be towed. But the majority of people who we have called Ubers for, which is maybe a dozen or so, they didn't drive there anyway. Cause they knew they were gonna do that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Alright, thank you very much. Uh, at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing, it is in seven eleven. And we do have um, one person uh, who signed up. So if Ms. Limbeck would come and please address the commission with your name and your address.
My name is Christina Limbeck, my home address is one six zero eight seven Harmony Trail, Lakeville. My business address is one two two five five Nicolet Avenue. Um, I own a medical equipment and, and supply company, I've been in business for twenty-three years. I moved to Burnsville to be in an office park, I was next door to a bar for twenty-one years. I have been there, I've been at the bar, just served pizza, they had a cafe open in the morning for a while. You see things that it, it's, it's a nuisance to get in, to get out of your car in the morning. And you find garbage, broken bottles, maybe not with a brew pub, cause they're serving glasses, but there is. I moved to Burnsville for an office park and if, if I, I wouldn't have left where I was at if I wanted to be by a bar still. I got sick of the garbage, I got sick of a lot of stuff. Now, I would, brew pubs are fine, but I don't want it in our business park. I'm not alone, I know that there's a couple other tenants that feel the same way as I do. Um, I love where I'm located, I'm close to the freeway, we deliver our medical equipment to the, to all of the Twin Cities area. I don't want to leave Burnsville, but this is something that's very important to our company. And we really wanna keep it the same and not have a nuisance of garbage in the morning, cigarette butts. Blood on the sidewalks from fights, I've seen it all. Um, the other thing is, I do come into work late sometimes, um, when you can't sleep and you own your own business, you come into work late. And then, um, I don't want to have drunk people around when I just wanna get in and, you know, undo the, undo the. The alarm and get into the business safe. And um, my daughter also works for me, same thing with her, she lives in Burnsville right behind um, the heart, she lives right behind here. And same with her, I don't want her coming in at twenty-three years old, cute little blonde, you know, and have drunk people. You know, harass her or anything, we would have to call the cops. And I do know that um, we've had to call the cops at our old location often. Uh, we had a lot of break-ins, gas stolen from our cars, license plate stolen, dumping in our dumpsters. We've, we had a lot of that sort of things happen and it was from a lot of people that would go around to the bar and party in the back or whatever. So, but that's my concern and, you know, I, I, I love our location and I know I'm not alone in our business park.
Alright, thank you. Do you have questions for Ms. Limbeck?
Yeah, I was just curious if, sorry.
Thanks.
Did, did any of the things that he talked about earlier, that help you at all, or do you still feel like it would be a, a bar atmosphere?
A bar is a bar, you're sober, alcohol, people drink, they have a good time. Um, parking is an issue, if I'm on the side of the building that, um, I, I'm adjoining to them. We don't have enough parking as it is, it's very limited, you put a bar in, it's gonna be even worse for our side of the building. Um, I have elderly people, I have people in wheelchairs, um, high-end quads that need to come in and get their catheters from us. And they have to have close access, some of them don't walk, some use canes, some use wheelchairs, manual power, whatever. I need to have that open for them to get access to our building, um, cause some don't want us to deliver, they wanna come in and pick up their stuff. It's like their, their monthly thing they do and so it's like, I, I, it's kind of different. But it's a social event for some elderly people that come into our store once a month, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any, okay, thanks.
Thank you. Come on up. Please state your name and address for the record.
Okay, thank you. My name is Kim France, I wasn't planning on speaking today, but I'd like to, I live in Prior Lake, but my business is in the same um, park. Not exactly business park, uh, which is one two two four five Nicolet Avenue. When your map was up earlier, my business is right under about the word area. So we are right across, it used to be the dough shop, people act, asked about it all the time. My business is Twin Cities Escape Rooms, so I'm in potentially a little bit different situation. In that I'm currently sharing some of the same operating hours that I expected they would. I'm pretty excited about the potential of it, actually, I definitely don't mean to take away from anything that Ms. Lindquist. Did I say that right? Sorry, that she said, um. But she said, um, but my parking area is a little bit more direct with the shared, um, parking spaces that would be taken up. I'm not always there during the day, Monday through Friday, really like business hours, but I sometimes am, there are never more than four cars among us anyway. Overnight, I've never seen a car. I've never seen any more than one parked car for one of the, um, businesses down the way a little bit overnight at all. There were a few things I meant to say that I've kind of forgotten. If you have any questions, perhaps that'll help me jog my memory.
Any questions? Commissioner Roberts?
So you're in favor of this?
I am.
Okay, that's wonderful.
Commissioner John?
That was my question.
You have a question?
Uh, oh, perhaps one thing I meant to say, when the business used to say dough shop, I've been in, um, in place, I believe, thirty-four months. I don't think I shared a lot of time with when the dough shop was there, but almost all of my customer groups say, oh, is that donuts? We would love to go across the way and get donuts. I'm trying to kind of do a quick estimate in my head. I would say sixty percent of my business, uh, groups are families, and would really think it was fun to go share soda and have a donut afterwards if that was available. The other forty probably is young adults and people who are making more of a date night or a group, uh, date evening, and they probably would enjoy a beer. The rideshare option sounds like a great idea to me because from my experience, if they're planning on Ubering home, they also Uber there.
Ms. France? Can you identify your business on the the map that's on the screen right now?
Or was it on the satellite?
It's about under the word thousand. Not quite that far over.
And if I'm right, I think we share the back area, or you?
No, I'm in the front. I'm I'm right to the left of the. Yeah, but there's not pretty much parking, that's where I'm at.
Right, okay. So I think our back area is maybe kind of.
No, I, you guys are on the other side.
Do you kind of make an L?
I am on the, you see where the proposed lot is? I'm on the left right there.
Oh, okay.
That's me.
Okay, gotcha. Okay. There is someone I share the back lot with who I thought was maybe your job.
Oh, okay, got it.
Gotcha, so I'm sorry, I misunderstood where we're.
All right. Are there any other questions for Ms. France? Okay, thank you so much. Is there anybody else who would like to address the commission? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing at seven nineteen and open the conversation for the planning commission. Thoughts, comments? Commissioner Roberts?
Um, I I don't know what the rules and regs are for the city. You can answer this. Um, how do we assign designated parking stalls to a business?
Um, in this case, it's an existing shared parking area, and there aren't designated. A a property owner can choose to put up signage that might designate it as a certain, uh, businesses, um, spaces. Um, and then there are designated accessibility, uh, spaces that are calculated out through the building code as to how many of the spaces are accessible for the the space.
So it's done on their own?
Yes.
Commissioner Wad?
Uh, I just wanted to clarify that tavern use is a is an allowed conditional use within this zoning.
That's correct.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that, thanks.
And Commissioner John?
I'm so back and forth on this. I I have to say, I really enjoy the idea of having a a brew house here in Burnsville. I think it's awesome that Burnsville is the place you want to come to. I, um, we look at Bald Man Brewery over in Eagan, and I think that's that's excellent. Uh, Chris John, as a personal, as a person, I would go help move you in, and that's how excited I would be about this. And I do love the, uh, the, um, escape rooms too, so it would be, it would be a great, uh, pair of. But looking at a planning commission and 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 seeing some of the complaints, it it makes me hesitate just a little bit. And, um, listening to Ms. Limbeck and and her concerns, I can understand them. I really can, because when she came in here, she wasn't looking at, uh, moving in next to a a brew pub or a bar or even a restaurant, if you will. Where is the line? Because I know Grand Slam is very close to there, and they have food and.
And so this, if I may take me a moment to go back. So most of these are all B three, and a restaurant would also be allowed in the B three district with this particular development. It's that it is an existing plan unit development, and the conditional use, as well as some of the other, uh, part portions of the application, uh, made it a plan unit development amendment application rather than a conditional use permit application.
Okay, that's where my confusion is coming from then.
Okay.
Okay, I completely understand that.
Ms. Arnold, do you know, in in the two buildings that we've seen, is it one owner for those two buildings that is the landlord for these tenants?
Yes.
Okay, and so the owner of the complex is is comfortable with this plan, it seems. Um, but as far as what the planning commission can do, we need to look at what is allowable under, uh, the city ordinance. And I, from what I can tell, everything, uh, that has been presented to us today falls within the standards of reasonableness. Ms. Limbeck, I completely understand your concerns, but unfortunately, from my perspective, some of those concerns need to be taken up with the landlord, and the the idea of having available parking, um, for your business is probably something that could be worked out as well. Um, sorry, that's my son's school.
Oh, no.
Hopefully, everything's okay. Um, but, um, I I think as far as as what I want to do here, I I'm supportive of the project. I think it's a good idea. I like the fact that, um, you have some experience doing this. Um, we asked you a lot of questions, and I'm sorry if that made you uncomfortable, but you answered all of the the questions that we had. Um, so at this point, after Commissioner Roberts and anyone else would like to speak, I would stand for motion.
Um, when I talked with the owners of the Bald Man Brewing, I mean, it's in Eagan, but it's still down the road. I mean, it's it's in the wheelhouse of what we're talking about. It's the exact same type of thing. Um, it's in a similar type of building. There's offices and there's businesses right next, so it's kind of slammed right into this thing. Um, they have yet to have, and I was, that's what my concerns were, were a bar. They'd love to see it right in the heart of the city. That would have been great. Uh, being across thirteen is is gonna be tricky, but, um, they didn't really have a lot of things going on. And they restrict people from as much as they can't force people not to go outside. They don't allow people to congregate in front of their building and things like that. Um, it was just a different type of atmosphere. And as much as we are on the fence of things, we love seeing new businesses come in. Um, I do see your definite point of view. I mean, that that's what we're up here for, is to look out for the best interest of not only somebody coming in, but somebody who's already there. So that's what we're here for. The city council obviously has final say on all of this. We're gonna be a a go-between, that type of thing. So we want to look at all the things, and we can add to whatever we send to the city council. Um, you're limited on parking anyway from where you are. Uh, that was my question, was the possible designated stuff. If you're allowed to actually put up signs and say, don't park here for these hours, these are for my people.
Right.
I mean, I I would.
We're gone at five, so.
Yeah, and see, at that point, at that point, aside from the few that might go for a lunch or things like that, um, the people coming to your building for you won't be experiencing somebody at midnight leaving. Okay, the person that's going to get that, their their supplies and things like that. So from a timing standpoint, it might work out okay. Um, and then we have to talk about being a neighbor. You know, you're gonna have to be, if this goes through, you're gonna have to be a neighbor. Um, and we don't want to have a whole lot of conflict going on with that as well. And that's where you come in, you know, to be that awesome neighbor and assure her that these things are gonna work out. And, um, brew pubs are the up and coming thing. I mean, I I think they're a very nice atmosphere compared to your slam drunk bar. We've all seen those. That's a whole different dog, and that would be different. But I just had those comments to throw out there where, yeah, I was on the fence because I'm looking out for you, but then I'm looking out for you because this is part of our heart of the city growth. I mean, the buildings we're putting up there are going up, and they're looking very, very nice, and we need to have some things like that that they're gonna draw. Combination with your business, I can totally see why a family or somebody would want to get involved with that, so. Not to take up any more time, I just had to express that, just to make sure that you knew where I was standing. But, um, thinking about you and thinking about you. So thank you both for expressing your opinions.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Um, I did just want to, for the record, point out that there were two other people who had sent some messages in before the meeting. Um, one from Fuller Sales, which is a neighbor, and another from Carlson Consulting and Accounting, which is a neighbor. And they both shared some of the same concerns that you have. Um, and, you know, we don't take that lightly. We, one of the things, and I think Commissioner John will agree with me on this, that he and I are very conscientious of, is the safety of the the area, and anything that we can do to at least, uh, get people thinking about that is important to us. So if there's no other conversation, I would stand for motion.
I'll make the motion. Can you, can you put it back up on the screen so I can?
Yes.
Oh, there it was. Uh, so I move that we, uh, recommend to the city council approval of the application of Cooper Johnson for a planned unit development amendment for a tavern microbrewery to be located at one two two five seven Nicollet Avenue South, subject to the, uh, following conditions. Um, the previously approved PUD shall remain in full force and effect. Order control shall be addressed. Should order create a nuisance, the plans be revised at the time of sign permit application to show a panel sign and not a painted sign on the exterior of the building, and an updated comprehensive sign plan for the building criteria be submitted at the time of sign permit application.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Um, and this will be up for final consideration by the city council next Tuesday, the seventeenth of September. Thank you. All right, so that brings us to our next agenda item, which is a public hearing for Dean and Barbara Johnson Holdings for a planned unit development amendment for exterior materials and landscaping deviations located at one four zero four County Road Forty-two West. And it's nice to see you, Ms. Dean.
Nice to see you as well. It's been a while. Um, so this application was before the planning commission back in twenty seventeen. Um, and if I can recall correctly, I don't think any of the planning commission members, um, were on the planning commission at this time, so it's a kind of a refresh from you. Although, um, if you circle around the community, you may be familiar with the building and the transformation that's, um, gone on. So this particular property i- is on County Road Forty-two, um, and, um, Irving Avenue, so it's, um, northeast. Um, the site was a precision tuned auto, so it was a single user. Um, the property owner and applicant came in in twenty seventeen and proposed a facade remodel. Um, that triggered, um, a planning unit development amendment. Um, not only were there some changes with the exterior materials, the window, um, coverage for the exterior elevations, but also some setback deviations. They reconfigured the parking lot. So that was before the planning commission and city council, they recommended approval. Um, when those plans came into building permit, they had changed up a bit. So, um, the approval showed a drive-through, um, around the building because one of the end tenants was supposed to be a coffee or donut type shop, and that tenant wasn't secured, um, so they were left with trying to lease out the space. Um, ultimately, that drive-through was eliminated, and you have your three tenants that you have today, five guys, Jersey Mikes and Sprint. So, um, to catch you up, um, as the request was going through the building permit process and the building permit approval process, um, one of the things that they had to do to accommodate circulation around the building was remove a portion of the east portion of the building to allow circulation. Prior to to that, when it was a precision precision tuned, there was no circular access throughout the property. So they cut off part of the building, um, changed some of the exterior materials, and, um, unfortunately, they were, um, built as a concrete masonry unit um, that was not impregnated with color. So it's basically like a gray block with texture, which is, um, a prohibited material in our city code. Um, so one of the requests for the planning and development deviations is to, um, ask, the applicant is asking that that be considered a permitted material under the flexibility that we have under the planning and development. Another thing that came about, um, as the site, um, was being developed and changed, amended a bit, uh, the applicant and property owner realized there's really not a lot of room here. On paper, it looks like landscaping can be placed, but when you actually get out there and try to, you know, place trees and you're limited to, you know, three feet in width in some areas, that's just not gonna accommodate a full grown tree. Um, there's also some challenges with the site. It basically sits in a hole. Um, so what the applicant's proposing, uh, to do is reduce the amount of trees that were initially proposed, thirteen trees, and they're proposing to plant three trees, but really beef up, um, their shrubs, um, their grasses and perennials around the perimeter of the site. So I did a lot of talking, um, didn't pull up the elevations. Basically, um, in the color picture is what was built. Um, that's the concrete masonry unit that's, um, uncolored, unimpregnated color. Um, and then the elevation on the left is what was approved through building permit, which shows a base of, um, a stone veneer with, um, ephesus above to to blend in with, um, what was built along the, um, the south elevation. The applicant's requesting to paint the concrete masonry unit, um, a similar yellowish color to match the ephesus on the building. Staff, however, is, um, is not supportive of that request. Um, what we have asked is that a material is affixed to, um, the existing surface that meets one of our permitted, um, materials within our city code. And and we can be flexible of what's allowed. Um, we just want it to meet our city code requirements. And then the landscape plan, basically on the left, is what was approved. Um, the majority of the change is is the amount of trees, um, to shrubs, again, the perennials and a mix of grasses. Um, another item to point out, uh, that was referenced in your staff report, the original approval required, um, or they had proposed a bike parking that was called out as a, um, a benefit to the site. Um, it has not yet been installed, so staff is asking that that's installed prior to final occupancy of the building. With that, um, staff recommends approval, um, with the following conditions. One, that the elevations are revised to meet zoning code requirements. That the property owner adds some directional signage around the site. Um, there was kind of a, when I did a site visit, there was a makeshift sign that, um, showed, um, circulation, like I think it's had a one-way sign, um, that we are just asking that they install something permanent, uh, to provide some clarity to people that visit that site, and that prior to final occupancy, that the bike, um, rack is installed. The applicant is here. Um, if there are any further questions, um, I'm here as well.
We do have some questions for you, Ms. Dean. Mr. John?
Yeah, my brother's an architect, so it was it was nice to reach out to him to see the evis and and the C, the impregnated CMU compared to unimpregnated CMU, all those types of things. He said the biggest concern with painting it over is is peeling paint, things like that, making it kind of degrading the look. Is that the reason why the city wants to move to either ephesus or some other form of landscaping?
So, um, the unimpregnated, um, concrete masonry unit, i- it is more of a a plain, um, unadorned, um, look to to it. Um, and because it's explicitly prohibited, um, I, as a staff member, can't sign off on this. So, um, it, having the color gives, I guess, some, um, added qualities to a building. Um, it's more permanent. Like you said, you don't have to worry about peeling. Um, it it just, it's a longer lasting if if the color is integrated into the the product itself. Um, we do allow painting of brick. Um, and some concerns of that expressed um in the past have been, you know, if, if it peels, that becomes an eyesore. With anything with peeling of paint, um, it ultimately becomes a code enforcement issue, so.
That's a good answer. Thank you, yeah.
Commissioner Roberts?
Was the brick basically the oversight that was made by the occupant and the city? I read that there was an, or there was a mistake that people, they just didn't catch it. Is that basically what we're talking about?
So, um, plans were submitted.
Yeah.
Um, a memo was provided to correct um the prohibited material. Um, the plans were revised and resubmitted. What got into the contractor's hands, we believe, was not the final approved plan in their hands. So the contractor went off of what was in their hands and not the city-approved version.
Okay.
And the applicant can certainly correct me if, if I stated that incorrectly.
Commissioner Wood? I, I had the same question. Um, next question is about bike parking. Do you, and I know it's, it was on the plan, do you fir-, do, are these businesses going to draw people on their bikes? I drove around it too and, and I think it might be kind of dicey riding your bike in that parking lot. It was kind of dicey driving my car through it. That's my first question. My second question is, is that the, the um recommendation says prior to occupancy, the building is fully occupied, right?
Um, I'll answer the first question and then the second question, if I may. Um, so bike parking, um, it was included in the original approval. We do encourage, um, just from a, a city standpoint, um, if there's ever opportunity to add that as an amenity, that, um, that it be added. There are sidewalks along County Road um Forty-two and on, along Irvine, um, so it is a added benefit to those that, that whether it's dicey or, or not, um, it does provide opportunity for someone to bike there, also for employees. Um, some employees might not have access to um vehicular transportation, and so this um provides a spot for them to store their bike safely and lock it up. Um, as far as, um.
Prior to occupancy?
Yes, prior to occupancy. So they currently have a temporary, um, temporary CO, temporary certificate of occupancy. Um, they do not hold a final occupancy at this point.
Thank you. Commissioner Anderson?
Um, so the, the, my question has to do with the, the originally proposed trees. Is the, the worry that that will block view of the, you know, the, the stores from forty-two? That's why they don't want them there?
Um, that is a, a major concern of the tenants and from the property owner. Um, spacing is also of concern from a staff standpoint. Um, there's just, it's a very tight site, um, and not a lot of room um for mature trees. They might look, they might look great as soon as they plant them, but then as time goes on, they'll probably start ripping up sidewalks and growing into retaining malls and.
And then it looks like, uh, most of it on deciding this is not going to be shrubs of some sort?
Um, along the north side of the building, correct.
Okay.
And.
And at least along the, I'm thinking about like the border by forty-two, because I see all those little shrubs there. I'm wondering, were those supposed to be kind of different shrubs that are being added there, or is that going to be anything in particular?
Uh, planting shrubs, perennials, grasses.
Okay.
Alright, if the applicant would like to address the commission? Please state your name and address for the record.
Mark Rowe, Java Company, St. Paul, Minnesota.
Thank you.
So this, starting with the, the stucco and the CMU wall, it was not by intention. I mean, the cost, it's about the same to do a CMU wall as it is to do stucco. Um, what happened, and it wasn't the fault of the city, I mean, it was, it was intentional, it wasn't intentional. Our contractor picked up plans that were stamped, that had the CMU wall. And unfortunately, uh, those weren't the final plans, so should have I caught that? Maybe. I, I think if I looked at a hundred plans, I would miss that on ninety-nine-point-nine-nine-nine percent. I mean, I just wouldn't have caught it. I don't think anybody would. I think if we gave you guys the same plans, I think you guys would have missed it too, so. But long story short, he did his job and he built what was on the plans that were stamped. And I actually have the original set of stamped plans, not with me, but I got a photo copy of them and I can bring them to City Council too. And we wouldn't make a big deal of this, um, except for it's probably seventeen thousand dollar cost to change this. Sprint are one of our tenants. In order to get them in, they need to be in by Christmas. We had, we had to pave late in the season. It buckled, which tends to happen when the ground starts to freeze. And that was a, you know, twenty-five thousand overrun and all these little things, you know, add up. And uh, for unintentional mistake, which if done right and is primed correctly and painted, it'll look beautiful. So, I actually do have a breakdown of the costs and I want to share with you guys. I don't know if you want that for your overhead or not.
Could we put those on the overhead?
Sure.
Thank you.
And actually, if you place it on the podium.
Okay.
And there's a camera right above and it should pick it up.
Where? It's not too fancy of a bed we put together, you know, um, said my G C put that together, but it's pretty accurate. Uh, it was at twenty-four thousand. We, you know, beat up some subs a little bit and got the price down a little bit. But we believe if we do the correct primer, that, you know, it'll look really nice and you know, it was a mistake and nobody tried to do it, you know, so we're, we think, you know, going back and doing the, the, it, it won't look any better, in our opinion, and it'd save us some money and help the project. So I also have a picture of the stamped plans, which I don't know, probably. So, you know, they were stamped by, you know, by the city and then. Oops. So, painted. Oops. Painted CMU split face block, but, so again, um, you know, I don't know if you guys have any questions, but it definitely was not intentional. And uh, you know, we want it to look beautiful, so it's, we're hoping that you guys work with us and help us out. And then is, um, just jumping to the landscaping, um, our, our tenants have provided letters of support for this. Uh, the building is, the building, the lot, the lot is a smaller lot than our neighbors. Our neighbors, if you look at, you know, from TCF to, you know, all the Chick-fil-A that they're, they're on a lot bigger parcels, and they're able to put some of their trees in the back, not facing County Road Forty-two. On top of that, they don't sit in a hole like we do, so uh, get a couple situations that kind of make it make sense to work with us in that, hopefully.
Uh, Commissioner John, a question for the applicant.
Yeah, so I, I don't want to tie your hands or anything. One of the, one of the, one of the criteria for a variance cannot be economic. So it can't be the seventeen thousand dollars.
You're right.
And I completely agree. It, it was a mistake, you know.
Hardship is a.
Right.
We think a hardship, not just economic, but as far as timing, we have to take down the tenant's signage and inconvenience and, you know, just the amount of time it's going to take and for no benefit, in our opinion.
Right.
If done right with, you know, priming and painting correctly.
Ms. Dean?
If, if I, if I may just interrupt, um, so the request is for a planning at development. I just want to clarify that it, that's a little different than a variance. Um, with, with a variance, you, um, do you have to prove a practical difficulty and you can't use economics as one of the um reasoning? Um, this is a planning at development, so um, just again, a point of clarification. Um, it, it's a little different. Sometimes they're, um, they're used similarly, um, but in this case, um, what they have to show is that there's a benefit um to the community as a whole, that they're bringing something unique and different to the area, that it's a asset, um, that it's a, maybe a unique material that we don't have listed in our city code, that um is just as great and durable. Um, they're adding, in exchange for deviations to setbacks, they're adding sol- a solar roof and electric vehicle parking, so it's, they're kind of giving here, but doing something great in exchange.
Okay.
It's a little different.
So it's not really a variance, it's a, that's right, so it doesn't fall under the same criteria?
Correct, correct. Just a point of clarification.
Thank you.
Great point, and I remember that actually now that I think of it, when we filled out the application, we were, that's the way we decided to go with it, so.
Ms. Dean, so the CMU, the way it stands right now, unpainted, is also not permitted, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and so, I, I guess what? How did we get to this point? Did the city notice, hey, this building is not being built to the plans that we had approved? I, I mean, I'll be, I'll be quite honest with you. It's, it's a nice looking building. I think the CMU really um should look better. And so I, I'm curious just how we got here to this particular request.
So, um, the application was submitted um to the Planning Commission. It, the building actually looked different than what it does um right now. Through Planning Commission City Council approval, or City Council approval in twenty seventeen to submit a building permit, changes were made in the building exterior. Um, and it still, it met city code as far as breakdown in percentages of allowed material and minor materials. Um, and met everything. We got them to the point where they met everything except for the um east, southeast wall. Um, it was noted in a memo that um it just doesn't meet city code, revise your plans, architect submitted revised plans. Um, the stamped version, I believe that, that was um given out was um from our building department. Plans examiner, it says on there, there is a note that you need to meet all zoning requirements as well. There is a note there. Um, so there, at some point, yes, it, it did get missed that um there should have been this change. As far as the, I just lost my train of thought. As far as um the materials, yes, they're prohibited. They, it was flagged at time of inspection, so what happens is, building um is under construction. Our building inspectors go out, they look at, you know, footings, they look at the interior, the exterior, the mechanical equipment, electrical, um, planners go out. We typically look at the exterior materials, um, the parking, the landscaping, doesn't meet all the approved plan, the signs, the lighting, I may have said that. And it was no, noticed, hey, this doesn't match. I, I went out there, hey, this doesn't match up with what, what I signed off on. Something's wrong. I need to alert Mark and his team, um, which I did. We've had multiple phone conversations, email exchanges, memos, here's some all, it was built wrong, let's correct it, here's some alternatives that you can do. Mark had brought up, you know, the cost, um, you know, issues. Um, I, and decided to go the route of um asking for forgiveness after. And which you can do, there's that opportunity, there's the application, which they filled out. Um, and, and this is his opportunity to ask for um an exception to the city code, uh, which he's asking for tonight.
Ms. Garros?
Uh, if I could, I just wanted to explain for the Planning Commission, the way that our building permit reviews work. Uh, what happens is, there are multiple staff that review building plans and building permits. And one of them is the building official, uh, and their stamp was on it, but they're also need to meet everyone else's um requirements and standards, so um, just because there is the one stamp from, that means it meets the building code, part of it. It doesn't mean that it meets the fire code, it doesn't mean that it meets the zoning code, et cetera, so I just wanted you to be familiar with how that process works. Once everyone has signed off on the permit, then there's an okay for it to be issued and, uh, and it goes from there.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, just to remind ourselves, this is a public hearing, so.
I just want to say one more thing. Uh, in my experience on these projects, the, you know, the G C, the general contractor, they go and they pick up the plans directly from the city. And maybe I'm going to revise my process some going forward, and it wasn't intentional. The city, I mean, there's nothing but great people. There's been a challenging project, there's, there's easements, there's, I mean, she, Regina's been working for like two years on this. I mean, she's been patron saint. I mean, seriously, she probably hates me because I call her so much, but the city's been nothing but amazing to work with, and we're doing projects all around the Twin Cities. And I got to tell you, I would love to come back to Burnsville and do some more projects, because some cities, it's like they don't even want you. It's, they're not, but I, I want to say is that we're not trying to come here and be pool, pool with the city or anything like this. It was a simple mistake. And we just, you know, asked for forgiveness. We, we built the wrong thing, our G C took the plans and, and built it, and if we could have had it back and turned back the clock, we would rather have built stucco, wouldn't have cost anymore. Probably would have been even cheaper, because we would have done like wood frame and anyways, you guys, it would have been probably more economical to, to do it that way. So, you know, hopefully you work with us. I think we can make it look great, uh, with a little bit, a little bit of paint and it'll look beautiful. And, you know, we could even do, maybe add some brick at the bottom. I mean, we're willing to be flexible. You know, you meet us halfway, we'll, we'll put some maybe brick to match the facade in the front at the bottom, you know, so you know, somewhere halfway.
Alright.
We're not unreasonable.
Don't go anywhere. Commissioner John?
So you got to look at it from our point of view as well. Like when you're looking at the trees, you were saying, well, some of these places don't have the, doesn't seem like they have the same tree amounts, so if we let this go, does that start the slippery slope? Do other businesses say, well, hey, they got the CMU on there, and, and nobody said anything about that, so we have to look at it both ways, so nothing against you, and we really appreciate your business here. I love the fact that we have a Jersey Mikes here. That's awesome. This, this is a big day for us here. But I, I was just going to ask that, would you be willing to meet us halfway? Would there be things, improvements that you'd be willing to do to help us out? So that we, and, and I think you answered that. Is there a way we can still move forward with the project or the allowance of occupancy? Given that over a frame of time, does these issues become cleaned up? Or does that make sense? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Chair, if the Planning Commission wishes to uh make a recommendation with a, to change um one of the conditions that's proposed, um, you can certainly do that. For example, if you wanted to say, um, you know, the lower portion of that south, southeast wall um shall be revised to um with stone veneer and then the remainder of the wall sh- shall be painted or whatever you wish the recommendation to be, I think you have that, that flexibility. As your recommendation to City Council.
Right, it was final say in this. So if we said, maybe in five years, would you be willing to look at that, say, over a five-year period? Be willing to make those adjustments, um, whether it be using the ephesus or anything along those lines?
Yeah, I think we can just work into the budget at that point.
Right.
Yeah, absolutely.
Commissioner Wood? I was going to say, I think if we're gonna
I was gonna say, I think if we're gonna, um, it would be nice to see what, you know, what is it gonna look like? If it's gonna be, it's gonna change, or even if it was painted, it'd be nice to see the rendering of what painted, the painted block would look like versus, uh, the gray block.
Well, and at this point, I think that's, for a recommendation to the City Council, that's up to our discretion. Mr. Roberts.
Um, yeah, I, I get the feeling that we're pretty much all in the same boat here. I think the landscaping issue, we're okay, there's, there's sympathy where you're at. You know, when you're in a car driving, you're even lower than standing.
Absolutely.
And yeah, so where you're at is, is tough, so I can understand the whole tree thing and that shrubs will look good. Um, I'm actually inclined to say too, the building doesn't look that bad right now. I mean, it's fairly sharp, you know, for everything that's in there, yeah. Um, I guess for us, it's finding the, the right wordage to take this forward. So everybody is on a give and take. And I, I personally don't know how to rewrite this like that. You know, do we just ask for someone else to do it? If you can come back and, I guess that's the other question for you, would you want to come back and give us an idea of what this is gonna look like?
With a rendering or?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that'd be no problem, I can definitely do that.
Because everything then would basically be re- reworded? And for us to look at a cleaner slate with something to look at of what it could be like?
Yeah, I could do a rendering and if you like that, um, stone veneer that we have in the front, if we put that on the bottom. Um, if that would be kind of a meet in the middle, I can definitely get the drawn up and we'll come back, uh, next planning commission. Um, and I can show you guys exactly what, a picture's worth a thousand words and.
Yeah.
I, my, I had, I was gonna have the architect do it and they, he didn't quite get to it. So, uh, unfortunately, I, um, I think I'll, I'll have it done a nice rendering so you guys can really see what it looks like. But what I'm thinking in my mind is, you know, the painted block and then, uh, the, the veneer at the bottom, uh, the stone veneer that we have in the front, uh, of the building. I think that'd be kind of a happy, be in the middle type of situation.
Sure, show where the, show the bike rack in there.
Yep, show the bike rack, we'll figure out where to put that bike rack, you know, on the roof.
Do you, do you have estimates for the cost of painting the building? And will you be using licensed insured professionals to do that?
Yeah, our GC handles that, our general contractor, so, you know, I, I'm assuming the answer is yes, you know, so.
So the cost is negligible since your, your group is doing it?
Yeah, well, the cost, the cost to paint that side wall is about, you know, somewhere between two thousand, I think it's about two thousand dollars, maybe three thousand. I could be mixing up a project in my mind.
And how much for the veneer if we went three feet up around the backside?
Oh, I think I might even have that.
Yeah, that was.
I think it's, I think it's like fifty-two hundred bucks, fifty-two fifty.
Okay.
So it's about, cuts about in half, you know, which, I guess we, but I mean, we just want to make progress, you know, and I think that's, you know, hey, it happened, can't do anything about it. So let's try to be fair and we'll be in the middle. But yeah, I can definitely get that drawn up as far as a plan so you guys can see it.
Okay, I would like to have the public hearing now, so thank you very much. And I will open the public hearing at eight o'clock, if there's anybody who'd like to speak to this. And I will close the public hearing at eight o'clock. So conversation from the commission, what are your thoughts? Do you like the idea of uh, meeting in the middle with some direction from the commission as far as what the aesthetic should ultimately look like? Um, do you like the idea of going back to the final plans that should have been followed? Um, when the sides in the front were redeveloped? Uh, or any other suggestions, Mr. Wad?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to repeat that if it's gonna, it'd be nice to see what's being proposed. And so if it's gonna be, uh, you know, it's hard to commit right now to meet in the middle without knowing what that's gonna look like. Um, and, yeah, that's, that's my like comment.
So Ms. Dean, the only, uh, there's no time constraints to this, it's just, uh, uh, the extension of getting the final certificate of occupancy, is that correct?
So, um, a couple of timeframes that we just need to be aware of is the, um, the one hundred and twenty-day clock, um, for review of projects, and I'm, I believe we just extended that. So I'm just looking at the staff report.
Uh, it looks November fourteenth is the extension granted.
So there would be time, if you decided to recommend a continuance, uh, to bring it back to, um, the next Planning Commission or the following Planning Commission meeting after that. Um, we certainly have time built into the calendar to do that, um, if the applicant is okay with that. And then, um, another, uh, we can extend the final occupancy as well. Um, so we have the authority to do that.
Okay.
Or our building official does.
Thank you.
Speak on his be- behalf.
Can I make one comment?
Uh, please come to the podium.
If you look up on the screen right here, uh, lower left-hand side, if you can zoom in right there. That is pretty much what it's gonna look like, other than it's gonna be, it's gonna be same color other than it's gonna have texture with the block. So it would look really nice in my opinion, but.
From a distance, you won't hardly notice the texture.
You wouldn't notice it at all from a distance, other than it has some texture, which actually.
Go back down, I'm gonna point something out, unless Chris wants to go first.
Okay.
Um, for the commissioners, look at the lower pitcher and you see the sprint sign? Come down to the ground and go to the left, do you see that little veneer of stone?
Yeah.
That's basically what's gonna be carried throughout that entire wall, just like that. And then basically the rest of the upper is gonna be the same color as the top of the building. So it's all gonna kind of blend in that way. I mean, it will, I mean, the sprint sign's gonna pop, that's gonna be one thing that's gonna happen. But that's basically what we're gonna look at.
Commissioner John.
Yeah, I like that, it, it, it's fine. Um, the only concern, of course, is my brother's concerned of peeling the paint, but, um, it, I'll, I'll go against him on that. Um, as far as, I, I like the, the stone that you have going around there, uh. But, um, my recommendation would, would be to still have, well, if, if that's the rendering we would have, would we need a continuance? Or would we be able to move forward with this right now?
I think Mr. Wad is proposing a continuance but has not made a motion.
Oh, that's how, that's how, okay. Is this the time to do that or is it, are we still, still in discussion?
There is no further discussion, we can do that.
Are we holding you back by waiting for a re- rendering?
Well, I, I think we have the rendering right here, that's why, I mean, I don't want to waste your guys' time. Um, it's, I think, like one of you guys pointed out, I mean, it's pretty much that right there, and then you zoom in, you can see it. You just, it's gonna be all one color, the only thing has a little texture to it. So, I mean, I can pay the architect to do that same thing, or we can just look at it and, you know, make a decision now. I mean, it seems to make sense to make a decision now.
Commissioner Wad.
So it's unclear to me whether, are you proposing just to paint the block? Or are you proposing to add the, add the stone veneer like the drawing and then paint the block above it?
Correct, add the stone and paint the block.
Okay.
So if that's something the commission's comfortable with, somebody will need to make a motion with that language to adjust, I believe, recommendation one. In alternative, we can continue this, uh, for another two to four weeks. Or we can vote on it as presented by staff.
Is there anybody opposed to doing that now?
Commissioner John.
Does staff, uh, staff okay with them painting the building using that? What, are you against it?
So our, our recommendation is that they use one of the materials that is permitted within city code. Um, ultimately, it's, you're the recommending body. Um, and so it's your choice to, if you agree with staff or not, uh, to make a recommendation to City Council.
Okay, Commissioner Roberts.
Well, because it's city code, we really don't have a building to go reference and say, oh, this has been painted ten years ago and it's still fine.
I can't think of anything off the top of my head. What I can say is that recently, um, through the Planning Commission and City Council process, we have allowed painting of brick, um, which was prohibited at one time. Uh, that is now permitted within our commercial zoning district. So, um, there has been some flexibility in that regard regarding painting of, uh, material. Um, there is concern though, um, with this or with any other product that you paint, that peeling can occur over time. And how we address that is through our code enforcement process. So we don't like it to get to that point, um, if we have, you know, property owners that, that maintain their buildings, but sometimes we do have to go to that, that level.
Band-aid we wanna fix.
All right, our tenants will let us know too, so, especially Sprint.
Right.
They're not shy.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Wad.
I'll propose a motion.
Thank you.
Um, so I recommend that the, uh, uh, that we recommended the City Council approval of the PUD amendment to allow for exterior materials and landscaping deviations located fourteen oh four County Road forty-two West with the following condition, and this is where I want to change the first, uh, con- condition. Um, the applicant shall apply for building permit with revised elevation for the east wall. Um, to, you know, more closely conform to the rendering that we just saw, and I'm not sure how to word that. Um, and what I'm trying to propose is adding the, um, stone veneer at the base per the drawing and painting the, um, uh, CMUs to match the stucco. Is that, okay, and then the second and third, um, conditions as they're, as they're written.
Can we make sure to specify that it will be primed prior to painting, primed?
I don't know that we can, this, I don't know that that's within our, is that within our?
It, it is on this particular issue.
Oh, okay. However, that gets worded.
I, I don't know the best practices for painting and priming this type of material, but I think the best practice should be used.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So, keeping it worded as it is and then adding, um, or the stone veneer at the bottom to align with what the height is on the front of the building. And then painting, uh, priming and painting, with a matching color.
Yeah.
To match the, the front of the building. So I just amended your motion, are you okay with it?
I approve your amendment.
And are you okay, you can also get creative.
Yep.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
And the motion carries forward, that will go to the City Council next Tuesday, the seventeenth. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner John. Okay, so thank you very much, we have made it through our public hearing items. And we are going to move on to, uh, some discussions on ordinances that we've looked at over the last year or two. Um, and I believe Ms. Garros is going to be leading these discussions. Um, so we're at item number six on the agenda. And this is a discussion for Planning Commission work plan item for conditional use permit and planned unit development administrative review, one-year check-in. And Ms. Garros.
Thank you, Commissioners, um, this is, uh, an informal, uh, type of, um, discussion. Uh, there are several work plan items that, um, the Planning Commission, uh, came up with at the beginning of the year and the City Council, uh, kind of blessed those. And, um, we're working through the majority of those, um, I think these two. If they're not the last two, it's, uh, very close, uh, to that. So, um, the first one here, uh, is the conditional use permit and planned unit development process. Uh, basically what happened is the City Council wanted to take a look at, um, economic competitiveness uh, in terms of how the city of Burnsville, um, deals with development projects, um, in our reviews and also our performance standards, uh, as it relates to other, um, other jurisdictions. And they also took a look at not only our surrounding cities, but our market cities, um, which are communities like Plymouth and Minnetonka and, uh, several others, St. Louis Park, cities that are somewhat closely similar to how Burnsville is. So they took a look at that and a number of changes were made, um, some of them to uses, where we made uses, um, like restaurants that were formerly conditional uses. We made them permitted uses, um, those types of things. In this case, when it came to conditional use and, um, PUDs, Burnsville has a lot of planned unit developments, not all cities do that. Um, planned unit developments are great, they allow flexibility, kind of in exchange for, um, public benefit as, um, Ms. Dean has discussed. Uh, they're great on the beginning part, um, when it comes to the end, they can be very cumbersome. Uh, and we've found that over the years, it's kind of a double-edged sword because, yeah, you get the deviations, but then if uses change or they want to do something else that seems reasonable, but it wasn't made part of that planned unit development, you have to go through this process of public hearings and formally amend those. So what the Planning Commission took a look at is, uh, are there ways through a planned unit development and a conditional use permit, um, to allow staff to have more administrative abilities, um, so that, uh, not so many applications, if you will, have to come through this formal process. Um, they wanted to make the ordinance, uh, and our processes more business friendly, uh, if you will. We had six meetings total, uh, with Planning Commission and City Council, we, uh, work sessions, regular meetings, uh, reviews. So there was, uh, quite an extensive look at that. We had a consultant, uh, WSB, that did also some extensive, uh, review and, uh, presented that information back. Uh, and what we came up with were a couple of things. With a planned unit development, what that is, um, I think for lack of a better way of saying it, it's, uh, kind of a contract, if you will, for what the zoning district is. When you look in the city zoning ordinance, you see different zoning districts and there are different requirements and uses that you can have in those districts. Well, for a planned unit development, what that does is it basically takes the plans as part of the project, similar to what we just looked at, and those become the zoning district, if you will. So it's a combination of the plans that were approved and all of the conditions that go along, um, that are approved with that PUD, and so that's the zoning district there. Um, the city attorney took a look and there are not a lot of opportunities for us to make changes to PUDs because it is a specific zoning district. Um, what we did do is, uh, in the PUD, in the ordinance that ultimately gets adopted, zoning or changing the zone to a planned unit development, we were able to add a provision, um, if, if Planning Commission Council feels it's appropriate, that other types of uses in the underlying zoning district, um, can still also be, um, done uh, in addition to whatever the specific PUD is for. There have been a few of those, uh, that we have been able to do. Um, in terms of how is it working today, um, this is really something that's going to be more useful for the older planned unit developments. And as we go forward, um, we've not had a number of them, um, you know, any that I can specify, say, yep, we adopted this ordinance, now we have ten that worked and five that don't. So we really don't have that at this point. But we do know that some of the older planned unit developments were very specific. One I can think of, uh, is on Frontier Drive over by Valley Natural Foods. Uh, there was a, um, um, two, there are two or three, I think three little office buildings. And when that was approved, um, there was a huge neighborhood involvement, um, big task force. Uh, and what they did is they identified specifically small business uses could go in there. We recently had an application for PUD, this has been within the last couple of years, uh, to do a, um, We recently had an application for P U D, this has been within the last couple of years, uh to do a um uh daycare nursery. And that ultimately, no, that doesn't mean small business, so that use, I mean, it it wasn't allowed for other reasons, parking and whatnot, but that just gives you the kind of the idea that we have to research every planned unit development and every conditional use permit and see what exactly was approved. So this, we do believe, will be helpful um in the future, uh but we don't have any specific numbers on. It's it's done these things to this point. Um with regard to, um sorry about that, with regard to conditional use permits, um we have, again, that is something that in the ordinance, under each zone, there are uses that are permitted, meaning you can basically just come in with a building permit and do those. There are accessory ones, meaning that as long as it's a subset or a subsidiary, if you will, to the principal use, you can do it, and then there are conditional uses. And when an ordinance is set up, um cities will take a look at and they'll say, you know, these types of uses we think generally fit in this zone, but they may have some um, there may be some particular things that we should take a look at uh in making sure that they won't have um adverse impacts to adjacent properties and what, so things like um churches are typically a conditional use in residential. It's a big facility, um it's not a single-family home, and it's just the differences, you take a look at traffic and noise and and certain parameters. So what we did is um we were able to um change some of the conditional uses to make them permitted uses, and I think that that has been um beneficial. Um we have a couple of restaurants that would have been conditional use permits and now basically they can just uh open, if you will, as long as they meet building permit criteria. So with that, um from a staff recommendation, we believe that the ordinances um are still appropriate and valid. Um we don't think that there needs to be changes made to those at this point in time. Um and it's something that really is, uh it's been a year since they've been adopted. So um a lot of times the planning commission will like to see them come back in a year just to see kind of how things are working, uh if there are any modifications that need to be made. And in this case, um staff believes that uh they will work well, um you know, in the future as we go along dealing with all of these planned unit developments. Um and we don't believe that there is a need to further modify those. But it's a discussion item, it's on your planning commission work plan and that's why we're here. If you feel differently, uh to let us know and we will proceed uh with the direction that you provide to us.
Thank you, Ms. Garros.
Mr. John.
So I actually was watching those meetings from twenty seventeen, that's what made me late, believe it or not. Uh and it was it was interesting, Commissioner Benke was was talking about how he didn't like the ten percent on the building extensions or?
Yes.
Had we anything come in um for increased size of building or anything that never came forward to the city council or the planning commission because it fell underneath the thirty percent?
We haven't yet, but it's not just because it's thirty percent, it's because there are other other parts of the code that weren't necessarily met or close to being met. But we do believe um again that thirty percent does give more flexibility. Um it's just that if it's a conditional use permit or a P U D, chances are there were other deviations other than just that size standard, um but we do believe that it was a good uh a good move and will be beneficial in the future.
So if if there's other deviations that required to go before the commissions, can those building extensions be brought up or is that not necessarily the case? If if you have the, you know, if if you're able to use the C U P rather than the P U D?
Um the, it would need to come back because it's that zoning district, so to consider something else. Um but if it's just an addition, we've had a couple of additions that have come close, but they have maybe just been um a little bit more than thirty percent, um but it's come close. Um I don't know if Regina or Sarah, if you have any comments or?
Um well, so the vet clinic from April was was close when they originally came in for their expansion before they even have formally applied for their C U P amendment, but they also had other factors involved such as that they were a non-conforming use and so there was a variance incorporated into that request as well. And they ended up expanding larger than they had originally intended as well. So, come close, but nothing exactly. We've had much more um results from the uses that used to be conditional than we, or conditional than with anything else.
Ms. Garros, um say you had something that met this, these new um staff approval criteria, but there were still concerns that you had and it didn't necessarily have any other issues, would you still bring that to the commission? Or would you use the thirty percent or any of these other uh new guidelines as a yes or a no type of decision?
Uh we would really follow um what the actual ordinance language is and the approval language. Um and if it's something that we feel is not, you know, within that spirit and intent, um we will usually um err to bringing it before planning commission and council as opposed to having staff approve something that, you know, it's like, wow, we don't really think that that was appropriate.
Sure.
So that's usually how we we try to do things, we would rather rather bring them forward and have you have the opportunity to review it, let the public have their uh input and and go from that point.
Thank you for that. Uh any other comments from the commissioners? Do you want to see this again in a year?
I don't know, I would look at your guidance on this, do you think it's something that we actually would need to see? I mean, everybody just can review the same thing we're doing today?
It'd be basically the same, same type of thing.
I mean, I don't know how it could change that much more, I mean.
Yeah, I think it's going to be an incremental, you know, type of thing that will help, but you know, it's not a big, like now all of a sudden, wow, we've got twenty or thirty of these, that's great. I wish we did, but unfortunately, just with those processes, you know, there's some will leave.
I don't see it ever as staff trying to sneak it under the radar, it's just, let's move things along and I mean, we save a lot of people's time if we're able to do that than not have them come in front of the commission.
And that was the purpose for most of that.
Exactly, yep.
Okay, so I don't believe we need a motion, but are we are we comfortable with recommending that we continue moving forward and that we'll have ad hoc updates as necessary, as needed? Everybody comfortable with that?
Sounds good.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're filling out, yes.
Yes. We could have a motion, we just don't need one.
That's right, it's totally up to you, this is your work plan, so.
Alright, so let's go on to the next item, which is uh discussion, planning commission work plan, item for annual solar ordinance review.
Now, this one has had changes, um it did have quite an extensive review. Um the ordinance before our current ordinance was basically, yes, you can do solar, and that was about all there was, there wasn't really much of anything in the ordinance. Uh so we did a pretty extensive study looking at both um local and national um trends and standards and performance criteria and also, I mean, solar is just, it's booming and it has been for the past several years. Uh there are some tax incentives and uh rebate programs and now even the power companies are are involved with it. So uh it's something that definitely, uh I think um is uh something that's good to have. We have modified the ordinance a couple of times based on uh some tweaks uh for some changes and I think those were good changes. Um what we have, uh basically, there are a couple of things uh just for your general knowledge. Um there are communities that allow solar as a principal use, if you will. Those would be the solar gardens, you know, the larger solar farms, solar gardens, those types of things. When um Burnsville, when we were going through the ordinance process, uh the city council and planning commission felt that we are really a fully developed community and even the areas that aren't developed yet, like that are in the Minnesota River quadrant, they do have planned unit development approvals on them. So there are concepts as to how they will develop. So um the feeling was that as a principal use, um they didn't feel that that was something for the city of Burnsville, but they did recognize that we do have a lot of different rooftops, lots of different buildings out there and there's an opportunity to do a larger scale um accessory-type solar development. So that's really where they felt that the um that the ordinance should come from. So then we took a look at, these are accessory-type uses, uh pretty much if it's building-integrated, um that could be anything from like a solar awning um or any type of solar, basically if you can't see it or it looks like it's part of a building um exterior material. There are some really uh kind of neat products that are out there that those you could do, um do those just with a building permit. There are some other um standards that they wanted to take a look at for um like panels, solar panels. Um that's the more traditional um thing that's out there. Um they're coming up with some really great uh solar panels and things that just, they don't look like silver at all. Uh but that's a little costly and that's not really what's in the incentives programs at this point. So um we did modify the ordinance to remove some standards requiring um, they wanted at first to have the panels, not so much the panels themselves, but anything surrounding the panel or equipment, um depending on if you have a um uh heat exchanger or if you have um, you know, water involved, there are different processes for different types of applications. Uh so they wanted them to have colors that match the roof, for example, and city council ended up taking that out. Uh really, the only thing that is still in there deals with if there's a glare situation that becomes kind of a nuisance, you know, then we may need to look at it. It has not been an issue so far uh in all the applications that we've done. And then we also had another um issue with um the panel arrays, they were trying to get to the design when you're putting these on the rooftops and more so like when you're dealing with single-family neighborhoods. They didn't want to have, you know, panels just all over the place, so they tried to craft some language. Uh and we put in there that the panel arrays need to try to match the shape and proportion of the roof that they're on. That was very difficult um to administer. And also what happened is um triangular panels, when the ordinance was first put together, were readily available. Um but the manufacturers stopped making them. So when you have like a hip roof, for example, you no longer have that opportunity for those triangular panels. So trying to meet shape and proportion, planning commission and council just thought, you know, let's let's take that out and um so they did. And I think that uh the ordinance has worked well since, we haven't had any issues uh that have come up. Uh these are the number of permits um that we've had since the ordinance went into effect in twenty sixteen. And the twenty nineteen figure isn't done yet, we still have some other ones, I'm sure it'll be coming in. But you can see it, it has been uh increasing. We have a lot of larger solar installations, um school district buildings, they've been adding uh a lot of solar panels. Uh and um the uh I think a lot of the industrial um buildings too, especially in the Lark Industrial Park north of thirteen, have been doing this and it it's just something that makes sense to help them uh reduce their costs of operation. The um the next part of this is there is an organization called Soul Smart and um they are a group that has been put together and they are working with the metropolitan council, working with local communities, um actually, this is part of a federal program, uh trying to make solar um as easy and least expensive uh as possible and trying to really get at the regulatory aspects of it in the permitting because that tends to be where the bog comes down, you know, kind of slowing things down for solar. Uh so what they have done is they have a series of recommendations and uh criteria that they've looked at uh nationwide and they actually reviewed our ordinance. We have a local sustainability uh team uh made up of staff members from different departments and we try to look at all sorts of different opportunities for um sustainable resources, et cetera. The council did uh adopt a program and we participate in the program where we do get part of our energy resources through um solar farms, but they're actually located in other communities and that is a, it's a consortium that also involves the metropolitan council that set those up. So we do that. Um in addition to that, Soul Smart had some uh recommendations or things for the city to consider. So um we thought that this would be good to bring to the planning commission um because you do the standard review of this ordinance uh in addition to sustainability and parks and natural resources and those types of things. So I had indicated um what the uh kind of what their recommendations were in this table and um a little bit in terms of the staff considerations and uh what um what we thought and and how we use the ordinance. And we used uh their examples and we put together the uh brochure uh and some of the checklists that were in your packet that we would put on our website. Um and the building official has taken a look at them and they're pretty much good to go. Again, kind of self-help, mostly for residential, um but really for anyone looking to do a solar installation, so. So this was included, um I think based on our um review of the ordinance, um things are going well um with the ordinance. Uh it is a constantly changing technology uh and I think that it is a a good idea to um keep keep the ordinance on for your work plan to take a look at. Maybe in a few years, you know, if we have a few years in a row and there isn't anything, um you could consider taking it off, but our recommendation is to uh to continue to uh bring it back for your review and just update you on what's happening uh in that field. And with that?
Thank you very much. Any dialogue?
Can we go back a couple of slides to the, oh I'm sorry, I'm just doing the thing here.
Mr. Anderson.
I just had a quick question, I was kind of curious. What uh is considered to be a solar farm, is just the size of the land? Is it like, I mean, like as an example, if uh Burnsville Center said, we want to cover the whole roof with with solar, that's a huge area, but since it's on a already very large building, is that not going to be an issue?
The difference really is that um the solar array becomes the principal use of the property, so there isn't anything else there, it's just a solar array.
Okay.
Whereas our ordinance is set up so that you can do, you know, you can do these things on these larger buildings, um but it's not the principal use of the property.
Excellent.
Um so that that's where that comes into play.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, I would think being a city that's developed like we are, we don't have that type of area anyway, yeah. Can you go a couple of slides back, this is just a simple question, but right there.
Yep.
There's no zeros added onto these or nothing, that's nine?
Yep, that's what it is, number of permits.
I was looking at the permit numbers, I'm wondering is that going to be a times whatever, but that's what we're looking at. Okay, so we're not really booming, I know the spectrum of solar is big, but for right now, we're not really, okay.
No, and a lot of it really relates to, I think, um the the different um tax incentives uh that are available and a lot of those are actually ending here, um you know, in the next year or so, so, you know, we'll see if that continues. Um solar energy is a big business now and um I think it will continue. Um but yeah, the the number of permits, we really don't have all that, all that money.
Mr. John?
Yeah, I was at the state fair, we we saw a lot of um, uh they had like the ECO area and that, I mean, it's becoming a big thing and if you actually look, in twenty seventeen, it was three residential, it tripled in twenty eighteen and we're not done with twenty nineteen yet. So I would agree, it's going to be a bigger thing and it's a good thing really to to move forward.
It's a resource that's out there that, you know, is just waiting to be captured, so.
But yeah, I think keeping up to date on that is a great idea and keep moving forward, that's my recommendation anyway.
Ms. Garros, so some of the examples that um were in our background were some really creative uses of solar panels um in some of the pictures. Just like, and I'm guessing we talked about this last year, but can somebody completely eliminate their electric bill by putting solar panels on their house and can they actually capture enough electricity to then sell that back into the uh electrical grid?
Yeah, that is possible. We have um, we are. Yeah, that is possible. We have, um, we are at the same um, latitude as Germany. Germany is a leader, one of the most progressive um, nations involved in that, and yeah, that is totally possible.
I think it's great that the city has a sustainability team, can they come next year when we discuss this?
Actually, the city has been very successful, we've replaced um, all sorts of lighting with the uh, LED lighting. Um, we have, uh, one of the only green roofs is on a city facility, it's on the city water, uh, water plant site. Um, we do, I mean, they have done all sorts of analysis and um, everything from taking a look at our uh, vehicles, a couple of years ago, we went to uh, starting to use uh, Prius and hybrid vehicles. Uh, we just installed um, the
Electric vehicle charging stations. There's two in heart of the city.
Yep, on city facilities, so, um, it's a progressive group and uh, really it's, uh, if you go to the website and just click on the sustainability tab, they have a, a little um, dashboard that they show. And it's pretty amazing, um, the money that has been saved. One of the biggest things is because of the recycling of the uh, water supply down at the um, KMM quarry. We save just a ton of money, uh, and that's something that that was totally wasted, that was all just being pumped out to the river, and uh, being able to reuse that for both city of Savage and Burnsville. Um, just pretty amazing stuff.
So you said, as far as solar goes, the city is, is tapping into other communities' solar grids. Do we have any solar assets ourself right now?
Um, we, well, we have, there are, there is a lot of solar assets. Uh, when we did the twenty forty com plan, one of the things that we needed to do was to include a solar map. And there's actually a resource that you can get, um, it's, was developed by the University of Minnesota. You can look up your own home and see what your solar capacity is. Um, it, it's really a cool thing, and there is a lot of untapped capacity here. I think as the technology um, continues, a lot of people don't like the look of the panels. Um, but this new stuff that's coming out for these solar um, uh, building materials, roofing, um, it looks great. I mean, it looks like an architectural, you know, um, uh, an architectural shingle, for example. Uh, they're already available and those prices as they start coming down, I believe that people are really gonna be using those quite a bit.
Any other comments? Would like to see this in a year, I take it?
Yeah, that's a good, good one to revisit.
All right.
Thank you.
We'll uh, hope to see some more of the sustainability, sustainability team. Or at least maybe a picture, so they don't have to come in in the evening.
Sustainability man, too, yes.
Really? Did you come up with that? Did Marty come up with that?
Marty, maybe, maybe.
He, he may be a sustainability man, yeah, we don't know for sure.
He wears a mask, you can't tell.
All right, so, thank you very much, Ms. Geroz, and uh, with that, we will move to any updates that staff has.
Uh, your next meeting will be September twenty third, I believe. Um, and we're passing out the draft agenda right now for that meeting, so far there are two, two items that will be heard that evening.
And then as far as the Lake Marion Trail, uh, that actually will be going to city council in October. Uh, they, uh, it does need to go to the Parks and Natural Resource Commission first, and they just weren't quite ready to have that done, so, um, we don't anticipate any changes from what uh, planning commission saw. But your recommendations will go, you know, as you, uh, as you um, provided them, and uh, it's just the council meetings delayed uh, for about a month and a half.
I don't remember if we talked about it two weeks ago, but they were planning, i- if they got approval, this would be developed next year, built next year.
Yep.
Okay, so there's time on that.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep. That's it, from our side.
Updates from the commission?
No.
All right, well.
I move to adjourn.
It's eight forty, I'll sign it back.
I guess we'll hold a vote, all those in favor? All those opposed? And the meeting's adjourned at eight forty-one.